If we could make a start, can I welcome you to the Cabinet meeting, the special meeting of Cabinet. Just a few preliminaries to get the ball rolling. One is Members' Code of Congress, declaration of interest. Any Members of Cabinet members to declare any interest? Yeah, councillor Smith. Right, right, well, thanks Chris, send us apologies. Yeah. Anybody want to declare any interest? No, okay, so that's fine. Item two, the minutes of the last meeting. Minutes there for me to sign, so do you. Okay. Okay, the main item tonight is item three, revisions to the Constitution. I'm just going to say a few words to introduce that. Unlike councillor Clacklin, Deputy Leader of the Council, Cabinet member for improvement governance, to, you know, talk to this report, which I'm really grateful to, particularly Stephen Jennings, who's put a lot of work on getting us to where we are now. So, I mean, just in terms of making some introductory remarks, clearly, in terms of the genesis of this report, this is, the review of the Council's Constitution has been a key issue with the Improvement Board, and has been discussed by the Improvement Board, is a key action area in the Improvement Plan, and was an issue that the corporate peer challenge team raised for those last autumn when they were here, something they felt we needed to look at urgently together with the scheme of delegation. So, you know, we've had clear advice from our external advisors and experts that this is an area the Council needs to look at early urgently. The other, obviously, the other route into this that we've had is the Democracy Working Group, which Anna's been chairing as well. And took out the work that back bodies done, which she makes her comments. And we've obviously had five member events, mainly from the billion, I'm keen to recall, over the last sort of six months, around different elements of this agenda. And actually, with a few notable exceptions, in terms of elected member attendance, they've been very well attended, which is part of it really, so that just needs to note that. I want to stress, because there has been some debate at some of these member events and in other places, I want to stress at the outset that the administration intend to continue to operate Cabinet and the leader model. I'll make that very clear. We are not persuaded that it is the time to depart from that model, and we're certainly not persuaded to go back to the old committee system. And I know that's an issue of contention with the opposition, but I want to make it absolutely crystal clear that that is the administration's position for the avoidance of doubt. And I do personally believe that the Cabinet and the leader model is the best model for us as independents, and actually will enable us to work in the most efficient and effective manner in the way in which we make decisions. So I think it's important to put that on record. I think, just to talk a little bit about the aim of what we're trying to do, the aim of these changes is clearly to improve the way we make decisions and reach decisions. I think we need more clarity about the role of officers and members in this process. I think we need to enhance the role of non-executive members, particularly around scrutiny. I think we need to ensure that the non-executive members have more opportunities to influence policy formation. We are establishing a new world of neighbourhood working. I thank Emma Deeg for the excellent work that she's done on this. And that new model of neighbourhood working will, I think, enable us to deliver the vision that we talked about, member events and elsewhere, about elected members being community champions. So I think that will definitely facilitate that new role, which I think we've talked about a lot, obviously. And act as community champions. And also, our big hope is that the new arrangements will lead to greater engagement by local residents, and that's certainly been one of the criticisms that I think we've had levelled at us with the previous process, but actually not many members of the public participated. So that's an important aim as well. And finally, the new procedure around the Council is designed to focus on things that we are actually responsible for, rather than things that we're not responsible for. So I think that's an important change as well. And I think we need to say that these changes that we're proposing will recognise the outcome of the democratic process by giving appropriate authority for the ruling group on the Council to carry out policies, deliver its manifesto, but at the same time ensuring there is a transparent process around debating key issues, and that there is a process in place for holding the administration to account, which I think is really important as well in the whole process. So if I could just touch on one or two of those issues a bit more detail. The proposals around scrutiny to replace existing six scrutiny committees with three new policy performance committees, which align to the three new strategic directives, which I think makes a lot of sense. And then we've obviously got the overarching coordinating committee to oversee these new arrangements. I think the point to emphasise here is that the new committees will be much more, as I mentioned, involved in influencing policy upstream. I think at the moment, one of the comments I hear from members of scrutiny committees is, we're always reacting to Cabinet decisions or decisions that someone else has been made, been others made. Well, I'm really keen, and one of the main thrusts of the policy performance committees, is to engage them in early, a very early stage in the debate around council priorities. So that will mean, for example, that the Cabinet, and I am happy to give this assurance, will engage much more practically in the scrutiny debate around, with the chairs of these new committees, around the formal plan, which should form a framework and template for our priorities going forward. And I think that would be a real kind of departure from the way we've operated scrutiny in the past. Around the constituency committees, clearly we've agreed the principles for committees based on parliamentary constituencies. This new model, I believe, will, as well as being more cost-effective, having 12 separate bodies meeting, I'm hoping that it will have a much more kind of strategic oversight of key priorities within those constituencies, focused on a major plan. And also, we'll have some real evolved funding. And one of the things I wanted to stress is the £50,000 that we agreed in the budget. The aim there is that will just be the kind of Council's contribution, if you like, to the overall part. I'm really keen to encourage our partners to set up the plate and add their both financial resources and expertise to what the Council can bring to the table. So this is not just the Council, you know, putting in place a new model. It's important that we see this as a kind of, a new model that brings in all the key public agencies in the area, be that NHS, police, and so on and so forth. So I think that's going to be an interesting model to develop. And I think Anna's going to say a bit more about that in a minute, the constituency committees and how we take that forward. Finally, for the Council, as I said in my opening remarks, I do think we need to change the format. We need to move away, I think, from the kind of, too often, and I think, you know, all of us have been guilty about engaging in the kind of punch and duty sort of aspect of debating issues in the Council chamber. But I think the key for me here is, if we're focusing the Council meeting around the leader, Cabinet portfolio holders, the chairs of the policy performance committees, giving rhythm and call to taking questions, we're actually dealing with things that we're responsible for, the things that the Council deliver to our residents, the things that people pay the Council tax for. And for me, that's really where our attention should be, not on, I have to say, sometimes, things which are really outside our remit and we've got no direct control over. So it's to try and focus on the core services that we're responsible for delivering. And, I have to say, make the Cabinet, the leader and the Cabinet more accountable. I think often we don't use Council meetings to make sure that the executive is accountable, and we need to stop doing that. So it actually makes us more onus on the Cabinet members to answer questions and make sure that they are, you know, masters of their brief. But I think that's absolutely right, that's what we should be doing. So I think that is, that will be an important new format for the way we do business at the Council. Clearly, there are other issues in the report which I'm not going to go into in detail. So in paragraph 219, we talk about improving the scheme of delegation, getting more clarity and consistency around the respective roles of the members and officers, which I think we do need to do. In terms of, just finally for me, next steps, I mean, clearly, these proposals are going to be debated by the special Council meeting on the 23rd of May, which gives us an opportunity to do that. But, I mean, just in conclusion, I'd certainly like to report my thanks to all those elected members, and actually elected members across all parties, which I think has been good, who've taken part in the member events. I'd like to thank those members who responded to the questionnaire that we put out a couple of weeks ago. I think that's been a really, and we've got announced the results in our papers tonight. I think that's been a very useful piece of work. And again, I'd also like to thank the Members' Democracy Working Party. Clearly, you know, it needs to be, and Anna will talk about this in more detail, but wasn't the unanimity on that group, but at least it was an opportunity to debate the issues in more detail and in depth. I think for me, the point I would like to make in closing before I go to Anna, you know, these are not necessarily changes that are particularly radical. The comment from the fourth meaningful Members' Event, which I can hold in my mind, is that these aren't transformational, this is just about making the world normal. This is what normal councils do. And those of us who've been to other councils and have seen this model operating realise that we are, at the moment, the way we do things, I can put it politely, an outlaw. So this is about bringing normality to world, and I think it's long overdue. We do need to monitor the impact of these changes, and the reports towards the end talks about using the standards of the Constitutional Oversight Committee and the Leaders Board to monitor that. You know, we could do that on a cyclical basis, so we see how it goes after one cycle. We could always fine tune it, but I think, for me, these changes are long overdue, and will actually enable us to make better informed decisions, and decisions which are more aligned with what normal councils do. So, I am very happy to support these recommendations, but clearly, we'll have a long debate about things that the Council want to improve. But I just wanted to kind of give my bone of view of this. I'll hand over now to Anna.
Thanks very much, Bill, thank you. Thank you for the work that you've done, and what you shape the things as they look like. But I think I just wanted to set a bit of context and background. You know, there's recognition as far back as 2010 that scrutiny was not really working as an attractive role, and all the members were keen on that as a model of decision-making. The members who really wanted to return to the criticism, as a result of the Democracy Working Party that was set up in 2011, to try and reach a counter consensus about the sort of model of decision-making that we wanted to go forward with. But of course, the Democracy Working Party was set up in 2011, then it had a short hiatus of our four or five months before the committee started meeting again. And there were a number of issues recorded, as I said at my approach of the first chair. But events overtaking this really, and the terms of reference needed to be changed to incorporate issues around our financial position, serious monetary position at the Council, but also the external drivers in terms of the Improvement Board, the peer challenge, and the, obviously, you know, our various reports that the Council is seeing regarding our governance. So there were clearly other drivers for change, you know, on board. And clearly, those critical external reports had talked very much about the culture of the Council and about the toxic politics, and they need to get people working together and addressing issues in a more timely way. Also, there were issues highlighted to us about the issues around our Council being confrontation with the adversarial, and really not dealing with, not really dealing with decision-making, but dealing with notices of motion which really didn't go over. So in terms of the changing role of the Council, which has been driven not only by finance but also by these external factors, and of course, engaging members in this was really the key. Now, one I want to report to Cabinet is that the Democracy Working Party have reached consensus, they have reached agreement on the, you know, on what going forward. But what I would want to say is, we have five meetings of the Democracy Working Party. We gave lots of opportunities for engagement, we gave lots of opportunities for members to get on board and, you know, help us to take forward the proposals, which are very much mirrored on the new structure of the Authority in terms of the strategic directors and the, you know, the flagging of the organisational model. So what were the principles then, the comfort that behind the proposals that we brought forward today? Well, clearly, to empower members to take decisions and actions in the best interest of residents and of all stakeholders in the community. To really have some clear priorities in terms of the new policy performance committees, and ensure that we can have work done, that's discrete pieces of work, task and finish work, and work that will be able to be monitored and evaluated. So that's the internal policy performance. In terms of the community partnerships and the constituency committees, well, clearly, what we wanted to do there is strengthen, strengthen the neighbourhood model, and to enable decision-making to be taken at, you know, at the level in the community, where people have powers to carry out within a partnership role, making decision-making more effective. So what's the main proposals that the Cabinet members to bring on? The constituency committees based on four constituencies, changes to the scheme of delegation from policy performance committees for which have been identified by the Improvement Board for the peer challenge zones where we needed to make clear changes. On the financial savings in terms of the constituency committees, I would want to just point out that the eleven area committees that we are operating, the custom unit, so one for £2 million per year, we are proposing to put £50,000, a seed fund money, to each of the four constituency committees, and that's our contribution. We want to see what the partners will bring to the table, and how they can be used in terms of delivering decisions under the main project plans. So that, you know, on those, I think, I would want to clearly point out to Cabinet that we believe that the new changes to the Constitution will do a number of things. They will restore property decision-making processes, they will be transparent and accountable, and the accountability of officers in Cabinet will be, you know, be able to help to account. So we're now asking that officers bring forward a special Cabinet meeting on 23rd of May, which will set up clearly in terms of reference, certainly in terms of constituency committees, but also all the changes through the Constitution. So I think that's all I want to say to add to what you've said, Chair, and perhaps to take any comments or questions we have.
Okay, great, thanks, thanks Anna. Okay, so that, I think, sets the scene for what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what happens next. Any other Cabinet members want to add anything or make any contributions? Do you want to say?
If you want to say, I'm trying to say that I'm obviously, I think Anna will fill out extremely well the reasons for the change. As part of practice of the Council, we always test our new proposals with the Improvement Board of the Council. We did it on this piece of work as well. We made a mention to the Improvement Board to the eventual cabinet parliament. We've given the improved board a report of the rules, given copies of the survey numbers that we sent to them. I would say that I received very positive feedback on the chair of the Improvement Board. I was stressed that the improved board is a more party improved board, not any one party, a party improved board from the LGA nationally. And they endorsed, not in the process of the Council, but also in the direction of the changes are currently aligned with the expectation of a good and improving council. So I made a few minor comments, which were taken in general, nevertheless, very positive feedback from the Improved Board. And also, I was pleased with the board that the Discord, the older risk committee meeting last week, when we were also asked to work on the changes on the flat rotation side of the menu, also made some very positive comments about the direction of the Council, said the Council needed to move forward. So a broad endorsement, I might say a detailed endorsement, on the Improved Board and the Discord of the board together. And also, I was pleased with the board that the Discord, the older risk committee meeting last week, when we were also asked to work on the changes on the flat rotation side of the menu, also made some very positive comments about the direction of the Council, said the Council needed to move forward. So a broad endorsement, I might say a detailed endorsement, on the Improved Board and the Discord of the board together.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Okay, so, I mean, I think if there's no other comments, I'm simply going to move the recommendations in paragraph 13, we endorse those recommendations, Anna's talked about the more detailed report that we're looking for on the kind of detail round particularly constituency committees on 23rd of May. But I think this is obviously a recommendation to the full Council. So I would ask Cabinet to agree those recommendations. And I think just for completeness, we'd also want to just note really, in the supplementary agenda that Cabinet has had, the provisions to the contract procedure, rules, and the Council financial regulations, which have been agreed by all of you in this. So we just note now, but agreed recommendations in the report, paragraph 13, are those agreed?
Agreed.
And can I just thank Stephen particularly, because I know you've spent a long time on wading through the Constitution, and I know it's been quite a detailed piece of work, so I'd really appreciate you saying your input to this.
That's what I'm grieving about.
Absolutely. You ran right away. Okay, thank you very much. Great, thanks. Okay, so then that takes us on to the next item, which is item four, which is the financial monitoring for 2012/13. This is month 11, February 2013. Peter's here to answer any questions.
I just want to make a few observations really. First of all, I mean, I think, I'm really pleased, I do personally believe that we've got the Council's sort of budget, the finances generally on a much more sustainable footing. So I'm appreciating what Peter, you've done, your team, particularly around that. I mean, you were also, and your team are here, well done team, Jim and Paul. And also, Peter, you were telling me, maybe, I don't know if you want to go and just expand on this a little bit, about some interesting work you've been doing with budget holders around monitoring budgets, and how we might inject more rigor into the way we do that. And I think, I think for my point of view, that this gives us a really solid platform for getting on with the process of setting next year's budget, which I know we're already asking. So Peter, I don't know if you want to just say a little bit about, give that work reflecting on.
What we did was to get all the cost centre managers back from the Cabinet in the Council. And we've done about two thirds of them in two months, Monday and yesterday. We put them over the tables so they could talk to each other. And a lot of part of the exercise was getting them to talk and ask themselves about the problems that they faced. Particularly, we wanted to look at budget monitoring. The first question we posed to them was, how is your budget profile? Because expenditure takes place a lot here in some cases. And therefore, to avoid false signals of saying to somebody, your spend is like this, but your budget is like that, there's a difference. And actually, in fact, there's no real difference, because apparently what we do is we profile flat every month the same as the month before, because we don't do it any other way. Whereas in fact, we know that parks can go wild in the summer, the roads people go bananas in the winter, and the snow all around us. So the expenditure is longing, and we need the budget to be like that, so it actually fits better. So that was the first exercise, we thought we'd talk about how they should do that. And the second exercise was to say, when you're making predictions about spend, how do you go about doing it? Because at the beginning of the year, there are three elements. There's what you've actually spent, there's the commitments, which is what you have placed orders for. And the third one is, have you done forecasting, what models do you use, what data do you go to? All of that sort of stuff. The reason I'm asking that is so that they can then check the actual outcomes against their plan and trying to improve plans, so there's a learning process in this. So that was the second thing. And then we asked them to sign off their budgets, so actually you didn't have one, and what it was. It's quite important, because we have found people who have actually not learned their job in budget. And on the sheet they signed, we asked to rate themselves in terms of, we had three, you know, how confident do you feel you are as a cost centre manager to do your job? So that over a period of time, we can move from having some red ones, who are, you know, deadening back features, having no red ones, because we've got the training right, and we're getting the feedback. So this was, this took place inside of two hours. And the feedback we've been having is that they greatly appreciated it, partly because one of the phrases in the presentation was, do you know how to handle it? Because what we don't have is people, when they're facing a problem, they're blanking out their heads and just ignore it. We want them to put their hands up and say, yeah, the problem, can you help? And we gave them, you know, this escalation process. And the idea is to have a monthly newsletter, so create dialogue between ourselves, as well as getting them on rooms, as we actually did with our cost centre managers, so we go and talk to the mates. So we create a sort of a community of people who will over a period of time get better at their job. So that was the first exercise. We're going to do another one when we start looking at how to build projects, how to create them, what they should be doing there. So that was the next one. We've got a bit of a round session in the past, but we thought it was quite beautiful.
Okay, very good, yeah, it's good to hear about that. Sorry, Peter, while you're here, the only thing I want to, well, two or three of them I want to raise on this report. Clearly, this is a sort of tail end of the previous financial year, and we still have the spending freeze in place. What's your advice on whether we maintain that double rule?
The officers we've got is that you keep it going for three months. And there are three reasons for this. First of all, when the government introduces changes, they increase the amount of risks that the government faces. And some of those, whilst we're trying to estimate what risks we face, we don't have any data on, for example, spare room, tax, or the... have any data on, for example, spare room tax or the benefit changes to council tax. So we need some evidence, and that will prove in the first three months, to know whether we got it right. So it makes sense to throttle back on explaining just in case things turn out differently than what we assume. The second reason is that we'll be obviously doing those months due to the closing down. So we will then know, is that we command that, that it's either to our favour or against us, given the things that have happened over the last year. So that's another reason to keep it up just in case. The third one is that we're into a lot of implementation of major change, and the volume is such that we hope that it will go well. But again, the one is to take a wrench on that, just in case that we drag, we find something that this will do. So there's three reasons that we think are one that would support continuation of the three for these three months, and I want to take a wrench on that at the end of year.
Okay, great, I think that, I'm happy to go before, I think makes sense. And I think just the other point, I think you picked up on this before, is we're looking, well, I think we're looking for a separate report of our special cabinet meeting on 23rd of May on the debt issue, and hopefully Eugene sort of might turn that over to ten.
You're certainly going to be available for the time session to be available, but any additional work we've got has to include reading officers. And we'll be able to include in the report, I think, thank you for the light of what we have, we also can get access to.
Okay, I think that'd be really helpful. Right, okay, so thanks, Peter. Any more questions for Peter? So this report, okay, so I'm just going to suggest that we have two recommendations in paragraph 12. Do you want to agree those? Okay, Eugene? Which takes us on to item five, the financial monitoring report from London Capital. I've got no issues I want to raise on this. Any cabinet members want to say anything or ask any questions now? So can I suggest we agree again the recommendations in paragraph 12? Agreed? Okay. And then that takes us then to the final item tonight, which is the planning and logic process for the next budget round, 2014 to 2017. Peter, just want to highlight the main strands of this timetable.
I think the most important thing is that we need to get that book right and ready started, and to make sure we're collecting everything that we need to keep it back through the process, rather than halfway through, go full on it, and then go back and do work. That's the first thing. The second thing is that we want to bring the process nearer to ourselves, so that we get no decisions taken before Christmas or by Christmas. And the reason for that is it gives us a longer time to implement, so that the changes will be in place from the 1st of April, and therefore the saving can be much more secure. So I think those are the two things that we step out of this. I mean, indeed, we've got all the stuff that we need to think back as well, the government proposing a good budget process. There's obviously going to be the spending review coming along on 20th of June, which it paid us, well, we don't need to rush to do some, we need to get our thoughts right first. It is the case that the government senses the need for power back due to some funding changes, which are advantage, which obviously reflected in. Recently, in fact, on the 15th, they announced half a million pounds to do with transport, additional maintenance stuff for that. They've done stuff in terms of being paid, and we're awaiting the recommendation capitalisation here to appear. So there is some good news, but just for the day, I'm not sure if you're all, not so pleased. So that's one report that they tend to give. But it is the case that the report says there are changes here that we need to look at as a term of advance we take down.
Okay. I mean, I think personally, I think I really do support the idea of taking decisions earlier than we did last year, and I think for very good reasons that we well went nuts, we sort of were quite late on the, late on break in terms of putting the budget to bed. But I think bringing that forward makes a lot of sense, and so I think that's absolutely right. The other issue I was just going to raise, because it was raised by councillor Harley actually, the leaders' board last week, is I think it's absolutely important that we continue the excellent work of the round consultation in the next budget round, which I know is built into your process. But councillor Harley was asking for an evaluation of the what really matters exercise. What did we learn from that? Are we going to do anything differently, etcetera? So, sorry, I haven't had a chance to speak to you before this, but I'm sure that's kind of doing, so I think I'd ask for that to be added. As I think Peter's pointed out, there's still a lot of uncertainty around clearly about what the kind of macro positions will all look like in terms of government funding. So we obviously need to build as much flexibility really into the process of reacting to that as to when we get the information. But I think the broad thrust of the timetable, I think, is really good, and recommendations in paragraph two, I think, are eminently sensible. So any other questions or points that you have today?
Yeah, well, welcome to the news. So you have this precious fellow, isn't he? But just, you know, this is for the cabinet, I was getting some information this week from, I don't know, the information unit, on the shape of councils going forward in the next 10, 15 years. And if this downward trend, and this trend of austerity and cutting to the continued continue, there's not really much, so, you know, just welcome the news, but let's say it with, you know, pinchy software.
Yeah, okay, thanks for that, Anne. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm drawing attention to page one and page five of this report. I think it says how you're indicating, which you indicated, this is if you get another extremely difficult budget round, you're some sort of, you said, you take the easy path so far, in terms of being used in the team managers, the page end of Kjorn, and some sector assessors, and really because of the level of, of what the balance is, particularly, we are to be really looking at, and full by ourselves, and as well as some new ways of drilling themselves. So in the day between now and August, to see the central operation on that chart, each of the distributed vectors will be approaching the independent members, I can't talk to you about, well, this does the major projects, the major transformation projects, some shared services you can talk about, if others in the council can talk about, they evaluate. And also, what we hope to do is get your agreement to those five, six major projects, bring them also to the cabinet meeting for the end of May, open the doors to the project, and halfway along, start working with savings, and I think in some cases, says improvements if you're top lead by the next council year. So just to expect members who will be approached by, to speak to you, particularly, to talk about the major changes in your area, which I'm afraid will need to be very magical, given the scale of the government's application.
Just noticed, just an item of detail, Peter, that obviously, if you change your scrutiny committees to three based on the leading director, we just need to tweak that time scale, it's something that takes. Yeah, okay, great.
I didn't want to sue you, but I thought you'd say to the chairman.
No, no, I understand, I'm totally fine, totally fine. Okay, so with those comments and those really well-made contributions, can I suggest that we agree the recommendations in item two? Agreed? Okay, thank you very much. I've not been involved in any other urgent business, so my closing meeting has not been attended.